What? The, the, how come the?
Can't get away.
That's a nice thing.
Uh, yeah. That's a nice thing. It's the thought of kind of hanging out. Yeah. Oh, that's wrong. I didn't say. But it's all. It's, it's, anyway. I think most people. Uh. That's first. All for that. I don't know. There's black.
You ready? Yep. So, for the most part, for the time to get it together. It's, it's challenging.
It's, it's an accent.
I mean, right.
Right.
I like, I feel like that was.
We, 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 we have.
Yeah.
Good. That's, uh, all progressive. I'll step through. Yeah. Perfect.
Wait, wait, um, what did you guys, um, catch again? Oh, that's, oh, that's us.
I guess. We're gonna do that. That's point. Oh, that's because. Uh. That's young.
What do you like?
Much, much. Yeah. Best. They have school.
Like where we live, like Ashes, like Appleworth.
Like, uh, getting there.
Yeah.
Um.
Like.
Every night.
Like, probably.
It's a great.
Yeah, what do you mean by Adam?
Well. Oh, yeah.
That's right. Plus, they're only, plus they're just.
Yeah. Um. Oh, it's one. They don't.
I don't want. That's my, I just. Hello. Yeah. Well, do you, do you work, do you prefer to? Okay.
Uh, yeah.
I just.
It's a little hard. It's a little. What's happening? Uh, well, I thought. Well, we said.
Yes, he has all as well as not.
He has what?
All. Both have all. A whole. They're not all about that house.
Fuck. Wonderful. How you feel?
He had a.
Are they still on Saturday? Yeah.
Maybe. I love this part, right?
Um. Does what? Twelve first time. Five, five, six. Top. No, no. Guys. Well, no. You're. Evelyn. You guys excited? Yeah.
They would have.
Yeah.
And you can touch. Yeah.
That's why we're ready to save them. Yeah. It's all different. Yeah. Yeah. Going off. It's going back. Yeah. I heard that's not like. My youngest. One of his friends. Got a lot. Quite fast.
I love. I'm telling you. I told him. Please stay on your. This is the number. I'm not going to.
Yeah.
Just, yeah. I was waiting for the ones to ask. Yeah, I know. You're. Well. You know. Yeah, but yeah, I can.
He said.
Oh, yeah. I mean, he was. I was. Oh, okay. We're trying to find it. It's a. Oh, wow. That's a good one. A fun, fun. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay. No way. Because it's like. This is. Every time. You. Um. And people like. One of those. I. It's like. Well, it's almost. It's. Oh, my God. You know. Yeah. It's kind of long. Oh, yeah. It's like. You know. I don't know. What? Yeah.
I don't. What?
Uh. Hi. Um.
Who, who? Yeah. But. He's having.
I'm ready.
After. Yeah. So. I. Well. Things. They're big cells. But.
I'm. Oh.
Yeah. So. So that's how. I always. What's?
Oh, I'm just.
And.
It's like.
I'm.
It's like a.
I.
It's like. I don't know.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, there's one really funny. Yeah. I mean, it's. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
But there's a lot.
I got. Get me there.
Or something like. I'm. So. So. Or.
Yeah.
For. That.
Why? 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 And then you're gonna. So. And.
There is. Two.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For. You.
Hey. Hi.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Because I. It was like. It was like. Right. We don't care for advice. I was. I. I. Well.
Look. All. Don't. Think. These things. No.
Well, you have been not in like the city.
She can tell. But yes, she should. Is it?
I'm. 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 I'm.
No.
I'm. All the. Please. Yeah. Please. Is that. Someone did it? Someone. Someone. I'm. Right. Yes. If you.
I don't. Like I drive. You know. I will. And here's all that. You're loaded. Don't. Yeah. And then they just. I have.
Oh. There's a mom. Boy.
Oh, I.
I got.
Yeah. Like. So. Very. Then. You're gonna have. Try it.
Oh, I. I think it's. Definitely. A few.
No, I listen.
But I don't want. Those. The whole. That he does. And it's just. The tiny. Tell us. Oh, yeah. I didn't. I. It's. It's a little. No. It's a little. It's. And that. No. I don't. That's. Really. This is. That. So. On. This. I. I. Oh, wow. The. Yeah. Yeah. And. And. Yeah. So. I. So. You. I'm. I think.
Stop. Mark.
One of these. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You are. The. That's it. So. I'm. 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 Yeah. Yeah.
Well.
No. I'm lost. But today.
Yeah. I mean. And. So.
Actually. I. Where. Oh. But. Two. And. Um. I. I.
Um. I would. Know. The. It could be. So. I. So.
I love your jokes. Uh, thank you. You. I. So now. You're. I'm gonna. So. And. What? If you do. How?
I said. Four. But it's. That's what. Was.
Time. It's. Yes. I don't. I. You're. I think. I. So I used to. So. Well. Um. Oh, no. Oh, for. Yeah. Yeah. So. So.
I think. I think. That's.
Oh. I'm like. I'm gonna. Say. I. Yeah.
Taking part. Um. I'm. I just. They're. I. So. Or. But. Yeah. There's. I. Yeah.
You.
That's. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Hello, Frank?
Hey, Karen.
Hi.
Yeah.
Hello, Frank?
Hey, Karen.
Hi.
Yeah.
I got. I mean, that's. That's. You know. Because. Okay. Okay. I saw them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Um. Is it possible for you? I think. The council. You really. Yeah. Your, um. Report. Time goes out. I see that. You know.
Yeah.
Make notes. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You always make notes. Yeah. Yeah. That would. Sure, we'll do that.
(laughing).
Sir, how are you? How you doing, Karen?
Hi, sir, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
I feel like I, I talk to you every day and then all of a sudden. Another, another weekend I don't talk at all.
The, the. Negotiation time.
Gee.
I went. I went in at. Nine thirty four. I. Two thirty.
Frank?
Frank? Yeah.
I call this meeting to order. State Assembly City Council. Apologize for being late, but we had a very important executive session. Before this meeting. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of the flag.
(coughs).
Gracious God, as we come before you today to discuss important matters. We ask for your guidance and wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding, therefore we seek your direction in our decision-making process. Help us to listen attentively to one another with open hearts and minds. May we not be quick to judge or criticize, but instead seek to understand different perspectives. We pray that you will give us the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good of our city. We trust that you will guide us on this path and lead us to reach a consensus that reflects your will. May our words and actions be guided by your love. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Everlasting. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Eddinger?
Here.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
He's on vacation.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Sultana?
Yeah.
And Mayor Panto?
Here. Approval of the agenda?
Will they approve?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Congressman Pinnabone.
I'll make a second, but I have one change. Um. Under new business. Uh, Bill Number Sixty Six, Workforce Housing. I'm pulling from tonight's agenda. Uh, to make some additions and we'll bring it back next month.
All right. So, there's a motion on the floor to, uh, remove. Item Bill Number Sixty Six. Is there a second?
Is he on the table or just removed?
He's gonna remove.
Okay.
I second.
Roll call.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doc. Sorry. Uh, Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
We now have action on our minutes of our July ninth meeting.
So moved.
So moved and seconded by Mr. Brown. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Roll call.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles? Sorry. Mrs. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Do we have the oath?
I'm sorry?
You have the oath?
It's in front of you.
Oh, here it is. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Chief. Let's call the Mr. Scalzo.
Mr. Chief.
Mr. Chief.
Good evening, everybody. Appreciate you having us here this evening. Uh, we're gonna be doing a swearing-in tonight of our newest officer. Uh, we are currently, we have one officer we're swearing in tonight. Uh, we currently have five others who are in the academy who will be before you. Uh, sometime in December after their six-month academy stay. Uh, but tonight we're gonna be swearing in Officer Matt Stanley, who comes to us from a department in Virginia, so he's already got some time on the job, which is great for us, some experience. Um, and, uh. And we're get, we have him out on field training already and, and he's doing very well. Uh, so tonight, like I said, we're swearing in our newest officer as he begins a journey in his law enforcement career with the City of Easton Police Department. If I could have Matt, come on up. Please stand over here for me, Matt. Officer Stanley is committed to protecting and serving the citizens of the City of Easton. It's not a commitment that we as a department or as individual officers take lightly. It's done with honor and integrity. Officer Stanley should be proud of what he's accomplished so far, just having been selected to join the ranks of this department. The requirements and the duties of a police officer are, are not just ever changing, but they also demand a level of selflessness and dedication that is unparalleled. It's a job that goes unnoticed, but for the men and women who serve. It's a calling. It's a noble profession and it requires devotion, not to just, not just to fellow officers, but to the citizens and the visitors of this great city. To the family of Officer Stanley who are in attendance this evening, I'd like to take a moment to express my gratitude and the department's gratitude to you. For the sacrifices that you've already made as Officer Stanley continues on his journey in law enforcement. And for the, the sacrifices that he will be forced to make here in the future. Um. I'm grateful for Officer Stanley's promised commitment to this department and to the community, and as chief, I commit to providing Officer Stanley the best training, the best equipment, and the best support to give him every opportunity to be successful and safe in the cha, in this challenging profession. I wish him nothing but the best for a long, fruitful, and safe career. So if we wanna do the oath. I'm gonna step up.
Are you? Great to meet you. Good afternoon. I'm Matthew Stanley.
I'm Matthew Stanley. Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
Uh, support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United.
And the government.
Constitution of this common law.
The Constitution of the common. And then I will enforce the laws. Now, enforce the laws of this common law.
Of this common law.
And of the City of Easton.
City of Easton.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
Have you further swear?
Have you further swear?
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
Of a person's race.
A person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Have you further swear?
Have you further swear?
That I do not advocate?
That I do not advocate?
Nor am I knowingly a member.
Nor am I knowingly a member.
Of any organization.
Any organization.
That advocates the overthrow. That advocates the overthrow?
Advocates the overthrow?
Of the government of the United States?
The government of the United States?
Or of this common law?
Or of this common law?
By force or violence?
By force or violence?
I will not deny other persons?
I will not deny other persons?
Their rights?
Their rights?
Under the Constitution of the United States?
Under the Constitution of the United States?
Or the common law of the country?
Or the common law of the country?
Have you further swear?
Have you further swear?
That I will not so advocate?
That I will not advocate?
Nor will I knowingly become?
Nor will I knowingly become?
A member of such organization?
A member of such organization?
During the period?
During the period?
And I'm an employee of Easton?
And I'm an employee of Easton? Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I would just like to welcome Matthew to the force. Um, it was amazing the, uh, maturity level of this officer versus the five that I swore in last week. They were all young kids to me. Right, Mr. Pinnabone? To me, they're, they're young. They were kids.
Very young.
Very young, they were young. But, um, I wanna thank you, the family. Uh, you're joining a really good force. I have a lot of respect for the police officers in Easton. They've done a great job of bringing the crime rate down. They've done a great job of, uh, cleaning up the city worth all of our gangs and drugs, and the last eighteen years for me have been a real pleasure. Um, I've been here in the bad days, so I know, I, back in the eighties. But I wanna thank you, Officer Stanley and the family who's here. Uh, you're joining a good off- good, good force. Anyone else?
Welcome to the family. Um, I know that you will be, uh, well-received within our community, because one thing I can say about our officers, they, they're very community-minded, and they're well-respected, and we appreciate what they do.
Thank you, Officer. Chief, thank you. And at this time, we're gonna call up our mayor's summer youth camp to make their presentations. Um... We'll start with our duo. Olivia?
That's close, okay. Good morning, or sorry, good evening, council members. My name is Evelyn Montague. I'm a rising senior at Eastern Area High School, and I'm a resident of the city in the West Ward neighborhood.
Hi, I'm Olivia Drahoosh, and I'm a rising senior at Eastern Area High School, and I live in Forks Township. It's an honor to, for us to speak with you tonight and share our idea on how we can continue to improve our city through the lens of young people who have grown up in Easton and care deeply about its future.
So, every house in the city and in the municipalities gets a trash bin and a place to put their recycling. Due to certain weather conditions like wind and rain, sometimes these bins are displaced. Other times, they are seemingly taken entirely. This is especially a problem where I live in the West Ward, because of how close the houses are to each other and the varying amounts of bins each house contains and has.
Our proposed solution is to tag the bins with the addresses they belong to. This would help to identify bins after storms, and would also help decrease the amount of people living in Easton who lose their bins entirely and are forced to travel to City Hall to acquire a new one.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for letting us be a part of the city's future.
Thank you.
Great job.
Michael?
Mayor, I wanted to say something. Your timing is perfect, but it just happened to me two weeks ago, and I went out and got me some white paint.
Michael, you're up.
Good evening, City Council of Easton. My name is Michael Honorato. I'm from East Stroudsburg, Pennsylvania, and a graduate of Bethelm Catholic High School. Next year, I'll be attending Muhlenberg College to major in finance. It is clear that apartment development is becoming rapid throughout the city. The incentive for big developers in the city is huge compared to the incentive for homeownership. However, these high-end rentals are only affordable for certain people. Easton has the lowest median income in the area, so the push for an affordable lifestyle is key. This is why I'm proposing tax breaks and programs to aid the closing of properties. This would incentivize, this would incent- incentivize, sorry, more people to buy homes. The tax breaks could be up to ten years, and the programs to close on properties could be assisted through banks approved by the city. This is especially important on vacant properties that may be underdeveloped. This would even open up opportunities for real estate investments. By taking these steps, we can make Easton an even more attractive place to live and raise a family. Thank you for your time.
Very good, Michael, thank you.
Great job.
Very good, thank you.
Eva? You're up. Oh, Maz- Dustin, would you help her get that computer up, please? I thought it was already done.
Did you have the presentation?
Yeah, I emailed it to the mayor.
Oh.
And, no way, Shakira emailed it to some other girl, and then some other-
Yeah, I put it on last night.
He's on the phone, he can tell.
Yeah. You gotta get them eyes checked out. What was that Karen? What was that Karen? Alright. Pre- prayer.
Oh, okay.
See what I mean? You can't get anywhere with that. You have a blast drive.
Talking to me?
You're talking to me?
Probably injured. Yeah. Wow.
He's gotta get the file.
I mean, I understand the concept of seniority, but at the same time, come on.
Don't my, my, uh, pre-hears.
You should start with it.
What?
You should start with it.
I did.
You know what else you can do?
Family would like it, they'd like it.
Wow. Exactly.
Oh, it's on here. Here, I was looking for it. It's on there. One of these? Yeah, it's the first one.
No, 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 no.
She was jealous.
I think so.
Yeah.
I think she liked me better looking like Montel.
The, uh, click share does not wanna work.
Literally put what you put.
Oh, it, it'll show it on the screen. Let me, um, give this a quick reboot.
Oh.
Yeah, it's displaying.
Sorry.
Would you have, oh, what? We have five, but it, one's not, one's working. Uh, it should come here.
It has to be sent to this, this one. Just let me try it. It's almost done.
Oh.
Like, give me a- Oh, it's this one. Why are there two here?
Mom, you can kill it. Read it. Whenever, like, they would work, they would do it. Whenever this is gonna put it out, I think, oh, if it ever come on, and you stand up on top of the oven, and you think, but-
Oh, it's just doing that.
I bet.
These are your files right here?
Let this open. Is it gonna open? Here we go.
Yay!
There we go. Oh wait, ah! Let me pause that. Let me put that here. My vision of a safer Easton.
Name and address, name and picture.
Oh, yeah. My name is Eva Maria, and I am from Palmer. I moved here five years ago. And I'm going to give you a plan to make Easton safer. Ooh, okay, fair enough. Okay, wait. We will be going over my plan for the future, the drug crisis, the small drug crisis that we have. Um, public disturbances that have happened recently, drug-fueled crime, police roles, financial investment, and our vibrant future. And my call to action. Let me unpause this. So, our downtown's future. There is a opioid crisis. The crime is eroding the community. The other day, my mom was walking through downtown, and she saw a high man showering in, in the, what's it called? The fountain. It's ugly. It's not that ugly, but it's ugly. My vision, vibrant, a vibrant downtown with no homeless people, businesses tr- thriving, police investments secured, and police feel appreciated. I think we all want that. We want our police to feel appreciated. Easton has an underground opioid crisis. It's not as bad as New York or Las Vegas, but it's still a problem, and I feel like we need to look at it. Past pill, pill mills are lingering, and I've read a bunch of stories, I've heard a bunch of stories. This is not good. We need to look at it at least. PA has a lot of the addiction, heroin, alcohol, and... It says PA addiction is at three percent, but three percent is still, um, thousands of people, tens of thousands of people. So, right here is a graph of the people that have drug problems in Easton. As you can see, the most is people with alcohol. And abusing alcohol is a problem that you can't really solve. But again, a lot more people are abusing over-the-counter drugs or prescription reliever, um, pain relievers. There's a little more cocaine use and then a little more of halogens. There's a lot of public disturbances. Like I told you that story of my mom. She saw some guy high off his head, um, showering with clothes on in the public, um, fountain. Erratic behavior, public overdosing. It's totally unacceptable, and we need this fixed. And we'll be the perfect little town if all of this is fixed, honestly. As we all know, crack links to violence, drug activity influx with more crime, gangsters, guns, and drugs. That's just a filthy town. So we just need to eradicate all of that. There was a meth raid the other month, I think? The other month?
This week. This week?
Oh. Okay. And then six, there were six arrested. Yeah, six arrested. Illegal drugs, homicide, fugitives with ICE. And like, it's, gives a bad vibe for us. And I really love Easton, and I wanna see you guys thrive. So my idea is to hire five to ten more police for the downtown, and then we pay them, um, ten thousand dollars more, which, ten thousand times five is fifty thousand. Ten thousand times ten is a hundred thousand. It's kinda cheap, kind of not, but people will get encouraged to make our town safe. And we'll have faster response times. We'll have more aid with drugs. We'll improve the downtown atmosphere. Let it wait. Yeah. Financial investment. If we finance this and there's cops all over, we'll bring more people to here. The return investment is really good. It reduces crime costs, boosts tourism, and we can access- And we can access grants like the ones that we can get from the governor. Our vibrant future. Save families, save businesses. Addiction getting a considerable amount of help. And everyone's happy apart from the criminals. Police. This is my ending. Police are vital. We can invest in our future with police. We will support local safety with police. Thank you for giving me this time to explain to you my view. And thank you, police.
Thank you, Eva. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the summer camps, uh, recommendations and look, look at them at a, a future committee meeting. Was that a second from you, Mr. Pinnabone?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
That was great, thank you.
I, I just wanted to acknowledge each and every one of you. It takes a lot to get up in front and speak publicly. You all did a wonderful job and no disrespect, but once a rover, always a rover. And, uh, Eva, I love your enthusiasm, I really do. You, you really, uh, came through with that and we appreciate that. And there's a bonus to that. The chief was smiling from ear to ear the whole way through. There's a secret. Thank you so much.
Okay, and Evelyn is a rising senior, but she's also a cheerleader. So, and she's, she being as small as she is, she's one of the flyers.
That's right, she's on top, I knew under your face.
Okay, let's move on to public comment on agenda items only. There'll be time at the end of the meeting for comments about anything dealing with, uh, city of Easton. But right now, we're on agenda items only, seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Uh, the following items are up for consideration under consent agenda. We have, uh, resolution approving certificate of appropriateness for thirty-five North Fifth Street, sixty Center Square, one fifteen to nineteen North Hampton Street, one fourteen North Third Street, three fifteen North Hampton Street, one-two-three South Third Street, one fifty-four to fifty-six North Hampton Street and four sixteen Spring Garden Street.
Moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Councilmember Stoneback, me Rose.
It would all work.
Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
And Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
And Mrs. Sultana?
Aye.
There's no reports received by, uh, the council, so I will move on to reports of the committees. Finance Committee Vice Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. This, uh, last evening, uh, we met in committee and we talked about, uh, the, uh, York, York Capital Improvement Mayor last night. Um, and also, uh, Mrs. Sinecki, Director Sinecki has handed out some, uh, paperwork for us for the budgets going through, uh, for some of his projects. Um, and he had asked last night if anyone had any, uh, questions at that time. They could email or contact him, uh, today, had gotten anything? Nothing. Um, Ms. Campos, would you and Ms. Sinecki like to go over anything? And far as the update from the, uh, June?
We said we could answer questions tonight. Um, Mark had sent out the, um, the summary. I mean, we can certainly read through it, but we've submitted it for the record. Does council have any questions on any specific line items? We can address them right now? Okay.
Then that's all I have, Mayor, thank you. Okay, committee, councilmember Pinnabone.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the past few weeks, we have the hologram zoo ribbon cutting and grand opening on the eighteenth. The department worked with GEDP and the Iron Gates to coordinate our city connect game, which will be held on August seventh at seven oh five. And community development, and as bulked, we held our monthly RDA meeting, monthly Main Street Economic Vitality meeting, quarterly West Ward Community Initiative meeting, and then met separately with the West Ward Community Initiative staff, attended quarterly Main Street Business, uh, Breakfast Meeting, and attended Lea Valley's two hundred and fiftieth meeting. A grant we, uh, submitted was fifty thousand dollars to the county for the hotel tax grant, which would be for the stabilization and restoration of the Hooper House. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pinnabone. Uh, Planning and Coach Committee, Councilmember Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the next Planning Commission meeting will be in two weeks, Wednesday, August sixth, in this room. Um, I, the agenda's not out yet. Do we have any updates on the proposed warehouse project on Wood Avenue? Mayor?
I don't.
So, uh, anyone who's interested, I know I will be keeping an eye out on the city's website for the agenda. That's all I have.
I think they have to go to, they gotta go to zoning first, so.
I believe so too, but I wasn't sure if that was official.
Whoops.
Or if the planning is voting.
My, my understanding is that the request for a special exception will be before the Planning Commission for sure. What I'm not certain about is what the applicant's intentions are, uh, as far as any request not to be on the agenda for the approval of their plan. Because in theory, that can, that's still on the, that's still scheduled to be on the agenda, let's put it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Rose is on vacation. Public Works, Councilmember Eddinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report, I do have several, uh, resolutions I'm gonna be moving as well as bill number sixty-five. And I also want to announce that I'm, I will not be at the next council meeting, I'll be away.
Okay, good for you. Um, Administration Committee, Mrs. Sultana, Councilmember Sultana.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, we had a meeting last night where Brendan, the Director of the Sustainability, presented, uh, on the city's, uh, participation in the Soul Smart Program. Uh, there is a resolution for approval on the agenda and passing this resolution will confirm our participation in the program. This initiative aims to, um, attract solar businesses to our city and recognize the benefits of solar energy, including reduction, reduce carbon emission and improve air quality. That's all I have here.
Very good, thank you. It was a good presentation. Um, City Solicitor, Mr. Shear?
Yes, we, uh, met immediately prior to the, uh, public meeting opening. Uh, and the city council met an executive session to discuss, uh, property issues.
Okay. Um, also, the next is reporter the mayor. I just wanna mention, um, the summer camp is going on today and the only thing I'll say is that the five or six people that we have here, that we take to lunch every day, they're good eaters. Um, the, um, Alpha Phi Omega made a presentation last week at the la- last meeting and their obelisk, which they're donating to the city at a cost of about fifty thousand dollars, will be, uh, installed in the next couple of weeks. Um, also, um, give you a blueprint, communities update. Um, we did meet on Monday night and, um, we meet every other Monday, twice a month. And, uh, we've been putting together a plan that engages the people on South Side and it's about the South Side neighborhood that was selected for Blueprint Community. Um, the mural committee has been very active and we had the groundbreaking for the mural on Chubby's, um, western wall, which is along St. John Street. So you'll start to see that starting to take shape. Um, the artist is from Eastern High School and, um, the outline has started already. Matter of fact, they have, uh, the wording up there which says community of diversity. And if you know anything about South Side, it's the most diverse community in, in the city. I just wanna mention, and I'll be very, very brief, Mr. Campos, I won't say what I wanna say. But our special executive session was about the suburban water authority that we talked about over a year ago. And my patience is running thin. Um, we expected to have it as part of our twenty twenty-five budget. We then expected to have it as part of our twenty twenty-six budget. We're not having it, we can't count on them, they are really stalling. And my patience is running thin. So I just wanna mention that, that, uh, city council, uh, is aware of the fact that our lease to them of all of our water facilities that the city, citizens of Easton paid for is very much undervalued. We get about one point three, one point four million dollars a year and it's roughly worth about five point two million dollars a year. So we're getting, we're getting, and our water rates, I know people don't believe this, but our water rates consistently have been lower than average for the, uh, state of Pennsylvania. And that means because our undervalued lease of one million versus five million is the reason. So we've been, we had a, um, situation where they wanted to extend the lease beyond twenty thirty-one. The lease is up in twenty thirty-one, the current lease. And very honestly, uh, I won't be here, but I will make a lot of noise not to renew their lease. Um, the city ran it when I was here in the eighties and we could run it again. But I'll be darned if the citizens of Easton should pay on, who paid for all the assets, the water plant down on six eleven and the pipes. And the developers are paying for the pipes out in the townships. Um, I, I just think we, we, we will work on it again, we'll continue to work hard on it. We'll, we'll try to bring them to the table to negotiate, but they haven't. I tried to meet with them, first they said they couldn't meet because of sunshine law. Then I told them it's not, it's not part of the sunshine law. Then they said they couldn't meet collectively, they could only meet individually. And then they said, why you wanna meet with any people individually when we, we should, we be, be meeting with them collectively? So I don't know. So all I know is it's been over a year, almost three years that we've been talking about this. And it's time to make decisions for the benefit of the people of Easton. Just to let you know, a five million dollar lease hold improvement is four million dollars more than we have. The value, they came back to us and said they wanted to buy the system. The system is valued at two hundred million dollars. Two hundred million dollars is a lot of money. And it's worth about ten million dollars a year in, um, interest. So even if we just kept that two hundred million dollars in the bank and worked on the interest, we'd have ten million dollars more. We only collect eight million dollars in property taxes. We can eliminate all the property taxes in the city of Easton. And get down to where six mills where the townships are. Um, but I, I'm a very impatient person. I'm very impatient. I, if anybody knows me, I, I, I tend to fly off the handle and get mad. But I'm not, I'm, I'm really trying to be very professional about this. And all I can say is that I'm ready to make a decision for the benefit of Easton residents. I don't really care about you if you live in the other townships and boroughs, I really don't. I care about the residents of Easton. We are the lowest economic strata in the entire valley. We have the highest taxes in Lea Valley and we gave away an asset that really shouldn't have been given away. So we have two, two leases, nineteen fifty-eight lease where we gave them the outside, the city pipes for free, cause we get no money for that lease. And the two thousand and six lease, which we get roughly one point two million a year. And we get a third of their capital improvement, um, capacity, uh, event. So I just wanna make that as part of my last, um, last thing. And I thank Mr. Pinnabone for bringing up the hologram zoo. I was there for the opening and I thought it was really exciting. But my grandson was there, he's much younger than me. And, uh, he really liked it. So, uh, it, I think the kids will really enjoy it. All right, we'll move on to.
Mayor, before you go.
Go ahead.
Quick question. Is there any update for the, uh, uh, Dog Park on Scott's Park?
It, it's, it, Mr., Mr., um, Hopkins is here, so I, yeah. I thought you were gonna ask for an update on National Hunting Park.
No, I already know what that is. I already know what that is.
Okay, let's, there's no correspondence, no information.
Hey, hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor, just for clarification on the South Side mural. The artist, um, is not a high school student. Although he did go to Easton High School.
Oh, he went to Easton.
Yeah, he currently lives in the West Ward. And we did have a high scho- a current high school student that sat on the committee to help design it.
Okay, Mr. Pinnabone, thank you very much, Councilman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lewis, you're up.
Yep, Mayor, just one quick note. Um, last night, uh, the administration, uh, submitted and presented on the capital improvement plan. It's a five-year plan. Um, in addition to the capital improvement plan, um, I had submitted the pool report, um, that details the, uh, capital needs for the pool. Um, as required by the charter on the capital improvement plan, we're going to have a hearing at the next committee meeting, so we'll advertise for that hearing. So, and then we'll also post the capital improvement plan on the website as well as the pool plan. Um, and we can then, um, take questions from the public at, at the next committee hearing as a formal hearing. That's all I have for my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campos. Um, going to rate a new business.
Okay, we have a resolution approving the updated emergency management plan.
Second.
Move to second discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Miss, uh, Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Sultana?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Uh, resolution approving a stipulation agreement.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Move to second discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Sultana?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Uh, resolution approving an agreement with Pavement Impressions, Inc. for twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Move to second discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Sultana?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
And Mayor Panto?
Aye.
A resolution approving an agreement with traffic planning and design to provide traffic engineering services.
So moved. Second.
Second.
To second, roll call.
Uh, Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Sultana?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
A resolution approving a design agreement with Atlas Technical to replace Stormwater Box Culvert under Line Street.
So moved.
Second. Mayor, question?
Yes.
Being that line in center are underwater every time we get a decent rain and per our conversation, it started with seventy-eight and it's coming from seventy-eight. Is there any way for the state to, to step in on this and not put it all on the city?
Mr. Hopkins will address your concern.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, council may recall that, uh, you guys had approved a, uh, cooperation agreement with Williams Township sometime, I think it might have been a year or two ago. Uh, the reason for that was so that the township and the city could work cooperatively on fixing the water problems. Williams has an interest in developing in, in the northern half of their township. And we have an interest in trying to solve what is probably a hundred-year-old flooding problem at, on Glendale Street. Um, so Williams Township acquired, uh, new property next to the ex- new property next to the existing detention basin on Hilton Street from the Shrens. And the, right now, we have an ask into Pendot if they'll give us their basin and allow us to expand it and retain more water so we can slow it down and, and stop the flooding issue. That Pendot is in, they're trying to figure out a vehicle to make this all happen so that we can construct and attach to their facility. They're thinking about a possible lease or an HOP. They're not sure yet, but we just talked as recently as this week. And, and the goal is that, you know, we will get MS four credit, Pendot will get MS four credit, and the state likes the idea that there are two municipalities cooperating on an MS four project. And I think there's, I think there's a total of six projects in the township that we'd like to do. But the first one we're working on is to try and resolve the issue behind Center and Line.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Continue, Miss, Madam Clerk.
We have an, a resolution.
Why we got a bone?
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. Mrs. Sultana.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Pinabon.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
A resolution approving a license agreement with Flock Safety for installation of new license plate reader unit.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Sultana.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Pinabon.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
A resolution approving the city of Easton's participation in the Soul Smart Program.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Pinabon.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Sultana.
Aye.
A resolution authorizing Easton D C E D to apply for a Pennsylvania D C E D multimodal transportation fund award.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Pinabon.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Sultana.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
A resolution approving the sale of two police vehicles to the Easton area's school district.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Pinabon.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Sultana.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
And we have two bills to introduce, Mayor. Bill Number sixty-four, an ordinance repealing chapter four fifteen dash fifteen, annual auction of vendor spaces.
So moved.
Introduce. And.
Oh, it's a bill, sorry. So introduce.
Bill Number sixty-five, an ordinance adding criteria for painting of yellow curbs at intersections.
Introduce.
Mayor, I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
It's, it's actually from Mr. Hopkins. Mr. Hopkins, you and I have been talking well over a year in identifying some intersections to redo the painting, and I know this year you did a few throughout the city already. Could you just tell the public how you're going about picking the curbs that are gonna get the yellow painting, yellow paint additionally?
Well, well, right now, it's a little, you know, subjective, because, you know, obviously, we can't provide the service to everybody. We'd never be able to do it or maintain it. So, that's why we felt like we had to sit down and develop criteria that could make it more objective as to whether, you know, we do or don't paint an intersection. And as you're probably aware, it's, it's purely supplemental having the yellow curb there. I mean, you know, the, anyone can get a ticket where they park if they're within, you know, thirty feet of the intersection, whether it's yellow or not. It's, it's really a courtesy, but we, we just can't, we, we can't provide the service to everyone, so we have to, you know, pick the, you know, the intersections that need it most, and I think the criteria are well thought out, and there's still latitude in there. You know, there's latitude by judgment by the city engineer, regardless of whether those conditions are met. So.
Now, Mr. Hopkins, if I'm not mistaken, I thought we discussed, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but you were gonna look at the intersections closest to our elementary schools. March has a, has a problem, Cheston. I believe you did the four on Cheston at the beginning of the summer, around Cheston. And I thought those and some of our more dangerous intersections would be addressed first. Is that still the plan?
Sure, yep.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of the, of the plans.
Okay.
Thank you.
One of the things, the other things that Mr. Pinabon, one of the other things the administration does, we're deputizing the fire chief and the deputy fire chief to give tickets in fire zones or fire in front of hydrants or too close to the corner. It's been becoming more and more difficult for our trucks to get around the corners as our trucks get bigger and bigger and longer and longer.
I, I agree, Mayor, and that, that's a, deputizing is a great plan. I think during the budget, we're gonna have to discuss increasing the amount, the amount of parking enforcement. I talked to Louis in the last week. There was a couple of days where after four o'clock, we had none, because somebody called off, and there was no way to replace them. And parking in our neighborhoods, especially on corners, making it dangerous to see intersections, has been terrible. So, I, I think we're gonna have to look at that during the budget cycle.
Well, we look, we, we deal with the subjectivity is, in the neighborhoods. I mean, if you wanna enforce the neighborhoods, you're gonna get, eliminate four cars per block, per intersection. So, the police are meant, they go out and they use their best judgment and common sense before they just give everybody tickets. It's like giving everybody a ticket that goes to the game, the Red Rivers game on, at Cunningham Stadium. You could give out twenty tickets.
No, I, I, Mayor, I absolutely agree with you. Louis and I took a ride through the neighborhoods last week, and, you know, there was, there were two cars I told them about that I've reported numerous times in the neighborhoods that are always sticking out. And I understand wanting to be convenient for the parkers, but there are safety concerns, right? So, the ones that are causing safety where you really cannot see getting out. You know, when I'm in my trucks, it's not a problem. I sit high enough. But in a regular vehicle, you can't see coming out, and that, that becomes a safety concern, and that's my concern.
We certainly understand that.
Yeah, I understand the need for parking. Thank you.
Okay, we're at our point in our meeting where public comment on any comment, concern, question about the city of Easton, you can address. Anybody who would like to address city council, please come on up to the podium. You get name, address, and five minutes.
David Brodtsman, eight twenty-eight Philadelphia Road.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
David Brodtsman, eight twenty-eight Philadelphia Road. First, like to say thank for finally getting the trees cut at the neighborhood center, so I don't have to walk out the street. But they also asked, what is the height requirement for everybody's trees that you walk down the street? Because I got told that the forester doesn't have enough time to walk around and do it, so I will make a list, but I have to know how high they have to be. Does anybody know that? Okay.
Six and a half feet, average person. On a street, gate. Seven feet over sidewalk.
Well, there's lots of places around my house that are a problem. Streets sweeping the center of Philadelphia Road between sites and Line Street is still filled with cinders from this past winter. Sooner or later, our motor site's gonna wipe out, you know, by hitting them. To the, I believe I did once before. All the stuff down at, that I complained about down at Humor Park on the North Trail, none of that's been taken care of yet. There's also a bridge across the canal at Average Street, which I believe is a two-ton limit. There's no signs posted on there. Fire truck goes across it, they're a million and a half dollars, goes into the canal. There's no sign saying it's a two-ton bridge. There's no sign. There hasn't been for years. I used to work down here. It's been three, was three tons back when I worked there in nineteen ninety. Well, I'm telling you, we, I knew from when I worked there. There's trees broken off hanging over the, the different paths. You got some on the Arch Trail, you got some on Humor Park Trail. Anything being done with the traffic warnings for when you have the farmer's market on the.
Yep, signs up. Yeah, signs are up.
I was gonna answer that. Mr. Brodtsman, I apologize. I couldn't find your contact information. Mr. Hopkins ordered it, and it came in. Mr. Hopkins, what, last week? So, there is a sign there that goes up prior to the farmer's market or any closure that shows that the lane is closed and you must merge left. So, thank you, Dave, for getting that done, and Mr. Brodtsman for bringing it up.
How about the other week, I guess a car almost drove through it? Are you gonna put something, block it off so that nobody can drive? Like, put the orange, plastic things across the road? So that nobody can drive through it?
The water barriers?
Yeah. I understand that two or three weeks ago, somebody almost drove through it.
Well, an elderly man, Mayor, accidentally tried to drive through it. He, he stopped right away. We, we talked about that with other residents. The issue is, there's entrances and exits all along Larry Holmes Drive. And unfortunately, if someone is not gonna pay attention or try to break the law, it's kinda hard to stop it all along. But it was one incident in many years.
We will probably have to put water barriers there because of our new safety consciousness. We have water barriers for all of our festivals, and Farmer's Market should be one of them.
Correct.
They have a street end at Larry Holmes, at Third Street.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? City council, have any other business coming for the board?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Last night during committee, we discussed workforce housing. Councilman Brown wasn't aware of the support from the developers. I emailed everyone the article from Morning Call showing support from two of the developers that were contacted. If anybody on council or Mr. Brown needs any additional information between now and the next meeting, please feel free to reach out. Myself and Louis spoke last night at length, and we have a meeting coming up next week.
Have we, have we spoken to V M, anybody like that locally?
Spoke to V M, spoke to Perron, spoke to city center, the major developers in the city. Councilman Brown, I, I spoke to them today. Being that you've been on council twenty-two years, I'm confident you have contact numbers for all three, and they are fine with you calling them.
But, but the problem is, Mr. Pinabon, I work eight hours, and you don't.
Well, well, Councilman, no, I do. I work ten hours instead of standing with my city business. So, if you'd like to call, I don't know what else I can.
I'm not gonna get into that right now, but thank you for your time.
Well, I don't know what else I can do for you, Councilman. You're telling me that what I'm telling you isn't good enough.
I'm telling you, what I'm telling you, Mr. Councilman, what I'm saying to you is that what I'm saying to you is very simple. I would like to have them tell me face to face. Simple.
Well, then, reach out to them. I can't do everything for you.
Oh, you're not doing anything for me. You're doing it for the citizens.
You're the, but you're the only one asking. The citizens support it, and they believe it, and they read the paper. You're the only one asking for it. So, I would encourage you to be diligent and get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Pinabon, and Mr. Brown.
I have just one item. I just wanted to welcome Glaze to downtown Easton. They had their soft opening this morning. They're at one forty-nine North Hampton Street. That block is really looking great downtown. When I moved here, when I moved downtown almost eleven years ago, it was, really needed a facelift, and it's so great to see another business moving in there. They have.
Nice job, one of you.
The facade, it looks beautiful. The owners are really nice local people. They will make a fresh donut for you while you wait. You get to pick your toppings. They have breakfast sandwiches. They make their own brioche buns, and they have coffee. So, just wanted to give them a welcome. Be sure to stop in and give them a warm Easton welcome, please.
You have to give them. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Moved in second, and roll call.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Pinabon.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Sultana.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger.
Aye.
Thank you.